And report.
I don't.
That's Tuesday.
I'm sure.
What do you doubt?
I'm not too sure. I'm reporting to the.
Sharon.
Cause I ain't.
I had.
But I have been.
Alright, we're live and recording.
Cause you have a. On Sundays, right? And then.
That was. You guys.
They. Okay. You too.
What did you think? Did something come up?
Four cases. Yes. You have. We need. I.
There you press the.
Okay.
We're live and recording whenever you are.
Um, if I could ask everyone to silence their cell phones. Those. If we can rise to the. Pledge, please. I pledge with liberty and justice. I mean, I said it to America. And to. For which is. One nation, I declare. It is well, with liberty and justice. The unity of one. Well, so our first, our first order of business is um. The. Is the acceptance of our um. Minutes of our meeting held on Wednesday, May twenty first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, make a motion to set them.
Second down, okay.
On favor.
Aye.
Line. And. Our first order of business is building in grounds request to purchase a toolbox. Us with proceeds from the sale of the on building in grounds truck.
So this request might be a little bit too premature, but we'll just flip the bug in your ear. Um, building in grounds have retired their old rundown truck and have taken possession of the truck that was previously used and occupied by. DPW, they got it cleaned up and they fixed. Uh, whatever little minor issue ruined it, and now you'll see that parked out at. The um, the bank building. Um, Patrick would like to eventually, once we sell the old um, building in grounds truck. Request that whatever we have for proceeds, or not whatever we have, but to use some of the proceeds to go towards um, buying two toolboxes so that they can keep. Their tools that they use when they go around to all the buildings and all the properties locked in the toolbox. Um, the two that he's looking at right now are about five hundred dollars each, so would be roughly a total of a thousand. Um, I will come forward to you once we do sell the truck and we know exactly how much the proceeds are to ask you to, you know, we would accept the. The proceeds and then earmark whatever it was to offset the purchase of the toolboxes if you so choose, uh.
Yeah, except as. Yeah, so they just see something with their stuff and so.
Then I'll say box and bolt on the side. You are.
So I would, I would be above it. It should be alright.
I think they'd appreciate that.
I haven't heard that they were out of their other truck yet, because. We're gonna have to auction.
They are, and I think if, if we wanna either auction it or uh, advertise it for sale, whichever you guys think would be, make the best um. Get the more, most resale.
Doesn't work.
I'm not into trucks, well.
They're getting us the most money.
Yeah, yeah, they don't usually have to buy. Two blocks, though, I think.
I hope so. I hope so.
Yeah. Well, I think it'd be a good idea.
So we can either um, go forward with an auction, we can sell at private sale with an advertisement in the newspaper, or we have that um. The new muni bid that Craig has started. Um, he just sold, he just sold the scrap truck that we um, had a scrap for the.
How did he make out with that?
Five hundred dollars.
What if.
No, eight hundred, sorry, eight hundred.
Eight hundred eight.
Yeah.
It was more than.
I think that's just for the body, though. Or the uh, that's just the truck, not the model.
It's out.
Make sure. Do something. Yeah.
Okay, sir. Can't think that we could get as much as fifteen hundred at uh, option.
Anyone wanna make a motion that we. Send the truck to auction?
Dig up the title, if you're interested, and if we do that, having the past, uh, I'll be glad to do it, without charge. May or any fees, option.
I have a title on my desk.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, so like, um, he would be auctioning that truck.
Second down. On favor?
I don't.
Cause we made up.
Now.
Really well with the options of stuff. Okay, um. Indeed, they can say.
Yes, so um, we didn't have a, a meeting earlier in the month, but um. Officer Brennan um, came to us in March. Took a position with the Hill Police Department as the Chief of Police. So. We lost him to Hill.
Mm-hmm. He was a certified officer, right, that came.
Yeah.
So you're actively um.
We're still searching.
I searched it. Ah, alright. Hmm, lot of moving, lot of moving around. In this, in this, this is interesting.
Well, I hate it, I hate to see you lose, I mean, but I think it's a compliment, you training their chief.
Yeah. Okay.
But what ends up with you and then you scare with the land you're leaving?
No.
It's what it is. Okay, alright, uh, we'll generate our update on that's.
So starting next week, June twenty third through June twenty seventh, COVID, COVID election. Uh, we'll be here, starting the, the work, getting the pad, switches and gas lines for the generator completed. Uh, the generator will arrive uh, in July, uh, the week of seven seven. Uh, on six twenty six, all the power at the mill will be shut off, so there will be, we've blocked it out, so that. There will be no meetings, uh, Donna and Danielle have been aware that the power will be shut off on six twenty six to the mill.
And you're notifying the fire department?
Yes, I would hope you is.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that you're supposed to because. Of the, yeah, 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 that's just a good idea, I mean, yes. Yeah, alright. Um, UNH Wildlife Camera Beam Dam property two two five dash one zero one eight.
I got a email on June second uh, from the. Members at UNH, back in twenty twenty one, they had asked us to put a uh, game camera. Or, they've been in the region since twenty twenty one and twenty two, and they had put a game camera out. Uh, on this property, and I provided you with a picture of the property and where the location of the game camera is. And uh, they're just. Uh, monitoring the species that are in the area, so they, in the. I don't know when they started, if they exactly put the camera. Twenty two, I know we requested this since I've been here, so they have detected that there was seven beavers, thirty nine black bears. Twenty seven bobcats, one hundred chipmunks.
Right, I set the camera off.
Um, twenty one cotton-tailed rabbits, twenty eight coyotes. Two domestic dogs, two fishers. Sixty eight great gray squirrels, thirty one humans.
Thirty one humans.
Three opossums, two otters, fifty eight porcupines, two raccoons, two hundred and thirteen red squirrels. Oh, a hundred and seventy two snowshoe pears, two turkeys, three weasels, and two hundred and four whitetail deer.
I guess.
I, I'd like to ask them a question, you know, with those red squirrels license, he can tell one black from the other, or?
Yeah, they actually. They have a chip on them. So they are request, they are requesting that we um, allow them to keep the cameras there so that they can continue to do more research. And this would go until twenty twenty thirty, so another five years they would like to keep.
If we move to allow.
I do have a motion in there, and this helps UNH in collaboration with the New Hampshire Fishing Game. And I think it's pretty cool that they detected all those difference. And awesome.
All the bears have been beast, because they've killed more bears, I think. We keep up.
Well, bear, one.
I was saying, put the apple orchard on one oh six.
I will say, that's pretty deep in the woods for thirty one humans.
It is.
Yes, nomination.
Huh?
Yeah, you don't.
That's on my hand, what? I agree.
Right, then, what I'm thinking, in the other way, you drive my door.
But what's, what I think is cool is the um, the rabbits. Yeah, I think that's. You know, we said so many wild rabbits, but now you don't see so many, so that was pretty cool. Interesting. Motion, so we need now, so we need to make a motion to allow UNH in collaboration with the New Hampshire Fishing Game to leave the research camera. On town parcel two two five dash zero one eight dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Through the summer of twenty thirty for continued research.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Now, is that gonna?
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Only if you go count them.
Yeah.
Oh, fun.
Okay. Um, Route one oh six Realty Trust Commercial Industrial Exemption Application Review. Yeah.
So back in twenty eighteen, the town adopted the commercial and industrial exemption. And then it was re, re-revised in twenty two per the statute. Um, we only have. Three. Properties on one oh six who have applied for and then granted the exemption. Um, this one in particular is, um, we all know where this is, this is the storage. Facility one oh six, right for the college. Um. So per the RSA, you're going to apply for the exemption, you have to apply for the exemption before you apply for your permit and before you can. Start and sheriff. When they submitted their application, which is in your packet. It was submitted in with the building permit, and it went nowhere else, no one forwarded it to assessing or my office, it just sat in the building permit file, so it never got on to us to bring to you to approve or deny. So Mr. Mitchell got his tax bill this year and saw that the exemption that he applied for wasn't applied to his account. And I said, hold on, I personally do those myself, I've never seen an application, we don't have an application on file. So he did, Colleen did some digging with me, and she found it in the building permit file.
And it was stamped like as a copy, like. You know, if, if I was the person in the building department, I would just associate it with supporting documentation to go with the building permit, so I would think there was. Necessarily a responsibility that they didn't give it to us, I think it was just, it was assumed it was supporting doc. Okay. So someone didn't understand this whole thing.
No, okay, it is a new, there's, it's a new possession, it's not really, you know, something that everyone knows about, utilizes.
Yeah.
So is that why this one's not stamped, or is it just news that this one is?
Right. Um, and you might have two copies, cause he has one on lot fifty and lot, lot fifty two, the one in question is lot fifty two. Um, so all the real RSA says is that he has to submit it, so he technically did submit it. Just didn't, so we can't really fault him because it didn't go further.
Right.
Um, so legal said what we should do is get it in front of you, um, for you to discuss, so Colleen made up some really good um, points about the exemption. You want me to send you, you did all the research for me?
Right, right.
Um, so, again, this was submitting, submitted with the building permit, we didn't even know that it was in play, really, uh. There was another application, that's a whole other situation that we were told they are not ceding of it. And this one was kinda like left behind. Um, so technically, they didn't meet the deadline. Um. We're gonna have you take a look at it. So the idea behind this is that the RSA says that the intent is to incentivize businesses to build, rebuild, modernize, or enlarge within the municipality. Um. And the application has to specifically meet requirements that are in our warrant article according to the state law. Um, those are five different items. The first one is enhance economic growth and increase the town's tax base. So that's one item, but it has two requirements to it for one item. Um, another one is the creation of needed services or facilities that are not currently available in town. Redevelop, revitalize, commercial or industrial area. Um, prevent or eliminate blank. And then the last one is retain local jobs, increase the local job base, or provide diversity in the job base. So at least one of those items has to be satisfied for the application to meet the requirements of the RSA and our town adoption of the warrant article. In addition to that. The percent of the exemption and the duration of the exemption are at the Board of Selectmen's discretion for each individual application on a per case basis. So. One. Of these things being met, you know, if somebody's bringing a whole bunch of jobs into town. You might wanna give them a really significant. Exemption for a, a good period of time.
Sure.
If the benefit isn't as great, you might wanna give a lesser percentage of an exemption, or, you know, a, a medium exemption for a shorter period of time. Hmm, so per the state statute. To, the amount and the value of the public benefit are based on whether, um, what the benefit is to either all the property to municipal. Or a specific group or routes of parcel that have been designated by the legislative body. So that would be like if you established a district on one oh six or Route three or one forty and said, okay, this is gonna be a special exemption district where people are gonna. You go in there and you build something, we're gonna give you an exemption, it's, it's a special area. To my knowledge, Elise's knowledge, we don't have any designated districts. So then that leaves the qualification being the value of the public benefit to all of the properties within the municipality. So. Some of the things to think about, in addition to how this benefits us, is the taxpayer cost, because that does affect every property in the town of. So for every exemption that you grant, it means that all of the other taxpayers have to pick up. The remainder of what is being granted is an exemption, so you want to very carefully look at and weigh. What is the benefit that all the other properties in town are getting, what is the benefit that all the taxpayers in town are getting? For the exemption that we might grant, and it's a hard balance, because, yes, we have a property that got cleaned up, we had old buildings that were torn down, we have. New buildings that have been put up, it's, it's cleaned up and it looks better, but. Lot of people don't like the storage units. Um, you know, that, that's all part of. The consideration of what needs to be looked at. You need to look at what was included in the application for all the answers that they gave for how they're going to qualify for. A particular exemption, and then you have to take that and decide what type of exemption amount and duration they're going to be able to get. So we made up a couple of different scenarios of options and how the total tax loss might affect everyone. Um, by granting certain types of exemptions, so in the past, the first warrant article that we had at the very beginning, it was fifty percent for six years, that was. That was it, that was all that everybody got. So that was in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, and that was.
That's a while ago.
I had worked it.
And then in two thousand twenty two, when we passed a new one, according to tomorrow day, is when the board got the discretion to make a determination of what type of exemption they wanted to create and how long on a per case basis. So you don't need to treat each project, each property owner, each area of town. Don't necessarily have to be treated equally, you can look at what you feel like the weight of the public benefit is, and what type of exemption and length you might wanna give. A lot of other municipalities, they do what's, uh, the second, uh, fix, the second set of numbers in this packet is the graduated. Percentage. So they start out, the first year they give fifty percent, the second year they give forty percent, the third year thirty, and on until it's ten percent, and then the last year they don't get it, so they fall. Hmm, so that's how the graduated would work. Um, and then we did two other examples for if you did twenty percent over three, four and five years, or twenty five percent over three, four and five years. We attached a copy of the application so that you can see what was submitted to us. Um, the board has the discretion to request additional information also from the taxpayer. We don't have to make any decisions on this tonight, you can take the information and look at it, you can go and visit the property, you can look at the tax cards. Um, and, you know. Stew on it, do some more research. Um, if you have other numbers that you want us to work up, we have this all in the spreadsheet, I do have it available on my computer. Here as well, so if you have other scenarios either today or at a future meeting that you wanted to be worked up. We could plug those into the spreadsheet and tell you what those would be. Um, and what we would, what we would do at this point is, we would ask that the spring bill be paid. And then we would. Give them an abatement potentially, if you decided that disqualified for an exemption, we would give an abatement. Um. And or, we could ask if, if he could just let it fall out on the tax. So we would adjust the values, and then whatever could have been overpaid above and beyond for the first bill could come through and out on the fall bill.
I would ask if we were able to sell it on the second at least.
Yeah, um, and, and I wanna, the, the RSA. You wanna, I need to have that in front of you too.
I don't, I don't need an answer.
There's, um, there should be copies of the RSA.
In our warrant.
Oh, okay.
And.
Got.
In our warrant.
Uh, okay.
Seven, nine, three.
I was, I was on a planning board with this, in fact, I sponsored this. Because we were applying for commercial business in this town, you were on the board also. We voiced this, I'm feeling it, if my memory serves me right, in twenty two, it could change a little, but it was five years. At fifty percent of the valuation times the tax rate. Fixed one for months, you got an occupancy permit, that's when the clock started ticking. That's, uh, whatever permit, you wouldn't have an occupancy permit per se, you know, I think, and that's what we did for. The man down here by the dog track. He got, he, he's in for five years, he built that big building down there, well, both, both, the first one, that's what kinda brought him back to Belmont to build the second building. Was he got the five years and half the exemption. And so he bought an additional piece of property and built a big building, yes, we may bear. Most of these buildings are commercial buildings, so they're bringing some business of some kind into this community. Yes, the taxpayer in the town does probably pay it, but these buildings are gonna be here for a lot longer, it's gonna be a lot.
Are.
That's right.
Obviously.
Somebody's gonna pay the taxes. And now, there's nobody going to school. You know, there's. There's no demands really on the town, I mean, they all got, they're all metal buildings now, they all got fire and all the fancy equipment to make the bells and whistles go off. So chances of having a major fire in one of them. Available. They, we, we put the newer rules, and that's what this was put, put in for, so we can get some commercial property. Uh, in town. And we, we've done, it's accomplished what it was set out to do, the, the meaning of the bill. We can cloud it up with this and that, but the meaning was to give them five years at half the valuation.
No, when it was in twenty two, it gives you the right to do a per case.
He did, he did, after the twenty twenty two ballot, which says it's granted by per basis.
Which I think.
You should see the same here with twenty.
Right, and the majority of other municipalities do the graduated, they do fifty, forty, thirty, twenty, ten, so that it doesn't have a huge impact on. Things by just doing a whole bunch and then completely cutting it off, it kinda just slowly brings the town.
This, this Realty Trust company, Sonny and I, we've been with this town quite well, and he owns a lot of land on one oh six. And he's gonna be building more buildings, and they're gonna be commercial buildings. I don't wanna chase him out of town either, but I don't wanna grant him something we can't root with.
Well, he already built it too, so it's not like he's gonna leave if he got the exemption or not, so.
Say that again?
So he already built it, so he's, he's not gonna.
No, but he owns, he probably owns another couple hundred acres of land on one oh six.
He does.
There was a lot of.
Then you have to weigh the, the public benefit of more storage. With how much of an exemption you're going to pay.
So wishing it was important storage, I know it's such, it's not hitting on, on our school and stuff, which is great, just. And some, some of them were. I have many waters, so I want to see that, I mean, great, but.
And if you need any other information, you know, while you're mulling it over, I need to. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, we.
Put on the next agenda.
So we want a table.
Yes, please, I'll make that.
I'll check it.
On favor? Give us a chance to read this.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Um. Okay, what is Selectmen meeting schedule?
I have a request on Sharon, uh, Selectmen Champy to stay a little bit, but then, uh, she is not here because of a family obligation. Um, she would like to just be able to be in person to discuss this, and she'd like to table it to your next meeting.
Okay. Let's see, we get a big crowd.
Thank you, thank you.
Food crust.
If that proves anything.
Do you wanna take a look, or not take a look?
No, I'd like to phone on it, I, I know how she's gonna.
Yeah.
And I like to go back to the day meetings.
Oh, you know that.
Oh, you know that. I'm Chinese.
So you guys, I'll make a motion today, but you guys can do what you want with it. You guys don't rise in on it.
Um, I.
I think what we started.
I was just gonna say, I don't know if I'm gonna take it to the next meeting. I mean, you know, if she wants to, she can, they'll give her a chance to give her, her uh opinion on it, but it's, you know. Our next meeting is.
June second.
July.
Stop making one of the ten, you're a little late.
July second. July second at ten o'clock, I have to be.
So is that a motion move to chair?
I'll, I'll make that motion to table it to the next meeting and have Sharon's request of a second it, on favor. I, anyone opposed, propose to that?
What?
You oppose it.
Motion failed.
So motion failed, so then you can't table it, you have to vote on it.
Oh. Okay, all right. Um, so.
Hey, I, I obviously know where I stand, I've heard thinking, I think my, my meeting that. I do think where we've gone so far, where we're at now, is a good step in the right direction. Having one a night, one in the morning, allows us to meet with our department heads in the morning on their morning meetings. Gives an opportunity to the residents come up for late meetings.
I, I like the one night and one day meeting, that's for sure. I know you guys would prefer the morning meetings. Um, can I, when does the time change? Is it October?
November.
No, no. Can I, I'm, I'm. I'll be praying, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue on with the one morning meeting and one night meeting a month. Until November for however, the last meeting in October. The time changes, all right? I think that's a fair thing to do because I don't know about the rest of you, but it doesn't really matter. When I have to go out at night, when it's wicked cold, I tend to eat. I do that for the budget committee in, in the fall, you know, and I would prefer to stay with the schedule we are until through October. And then we address it again. That is a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
I'm.
A vote, a vote.
You know, we're not gaining anything, we get more people during the day and that's what the big thing was. They want to get the people in. And you can see there's only five people here today, tonight, whatever. But uh, and we, we usually get more during the day than we do at night. Now, somebody tried to publicize on the Facebook how they wanted everybody to come out tonight, we're going in two days in a row. And it grew a lot of eyes.
There's also graduation going on tonight, there's like week going on, it's. I mean, our first week we had this, we did have people here, second one it was.
I was invited here.
Windowed down. But I mean, I think given the opportunity to the rest, to the other ones, see what we do, interact with us, that, I mean, we are a town of working citizens. I mean, ninety percent of our town work, blue collar jobs are at work in the most days when we're here. I just, I can't say, I, I, I was a hard no and even going to this split meeting and that night, I'm willing to keep going split for now, because it's a good step in the right direction.
Well, I know what's gonna happen, yeah, if you put it up to your next meeting, it's gonna be a three to two vote. But what we tonight voted on tonight.
So would you like me to reiterate my motion to you or say it again?
Can you make it, they're just saying motion again?
Motion to reconsider your statement.
Have reconsider.
The one that voted no has to get the motion reconsidered. Can't be near you.
So John or Sunny would have to make the motion to reconsider.
I'm, I'm pretty good at math, I can figure it out.
I can make a motion on the table, let me, table, let me three two. If that's more comfortable for you guys instead of changing your vote. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion on table for July second again.
On favor?
Aye.
I. We're tableing until July second. Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote?
No, you can't.
Well, you know how it's gonna be.
So just vote to table until July second.
You know, you're gonna.
And then you'll be able to listen.
As Con said, it's gonna be three to two.
Then, then up please. Um.
Right.
Up. Please.
You know, I, but on a good, one on ideas and, and uh, we've had good luck with day meetings. And so why would you want to change things when things are going good?
Please.
And the.
Oh, we'll clear the room.
You guys, Sunny? Uh, we don't see anyone during the day either, so I think having a good bait effort of having this one night meeting. Gives them the chance, yeah, I'm up. We do the one a day, which is easier to me with our heads. Get all our operating business done and have the one a night to allow interaction.
I think you also have to consider, Sunny, unfortunately, um, it's a changing world, not all of us like the changes, right? A lot of things that are good, but a lot of things that we don't like. But I think that um, the voters did speak. As group. And I think, again, it's still the board's discretion. Um, even though it was on the ballot, it's, it has no legal bearing or anything, but it is um. In the board's best interest to listen to your voters.
Where are they?
Well, that's not, oh, no, I know.
You know, when things are working good, why would you want to change it?
It hasn't been working good, the, the morning meeting and the night meeting, I thought it was, it was. Smooth and, and I, and, and my motion, my, no, but my motion was kind of to get us through the summer months. It's still light, well, it's still light when we leave, um, gives everybody a chance to get home safely. Yeah. And um, we can address it in October and um, if we don't see a lot of change. People aren't here or whatever, through the winter months, we have it in the morning. We know one wants to go out in the evening in a snowstorm to come, that's to sit through four more night meetings in case anybody was.
So, so we have four, we have four night meetings till November first.
Looking at it that way, it's not really that bad.
All right, then we're just asking, table it.
I know. I'm trying to compromise, I'm trying to be up.
That was a meaningful, you're the chairman.
It wasn't a meaningful, you're the chairman.
I, I'm. I'm, I'm trying to, uh.
Rather than sitting here staring each other table, we do revisit again on our next meeting, which I know Sunny and I will lose, but. So, I, I don't mind your idea. I don't think that's, that might be the compromise, but. Obviously, with the three. Uh, three people that are here tonight. Five, excuse me. That are here at the meeting, uh, doesn't give a big representation of the voters, the town of Belmont.
So then instead of kicking it, why don't we go back to my motion? And just settle it. And be done with it till November.
Now it's November, it was October.
October, last meeting in October, we that's all setting my. When the time was changed, right, before the time change.
Who give you your right? Not that I know will agree with you.
All right.
The motion to table failing.
Yes, it is.
Send it, send your.
I'll resend. So we're gonna send the motion. To table it.
Then someone.
And then we're gonna reconsider my motion to, um. Stay with the schedule that we are at through October.
And who made that motion?
I did.
No, some of, one of these students need to make the reconsider motion.
Oh, you're gonna reconsider. Sunny's gonna reconsider. Sunny's gonna reconsider.
You just put his arm up.
You guys can get through to them.
Other, he's reconsidered. Okay, and who's second?
So all favor reconsider.
We're all in favor?
Yeah.
We're all in favor.
Hold on, hold on, we got one more motion, you gotta make your motion again.
Oh, I do?
Yes, I was just reconsider them.
Right, now I gotta receive like a re-press. Uh, I make a motion that we consider on the schedule, we, that we consider continuing the schedule that we're at. Right now, through the end of October, so that's one meeting a month in the morning, one meeting at night. And through our October meeting, the last meeting October. So that's.
I'll second it again. But I don't want to make them happen second it too. You already broke Sunny's arm over this bag.
Trying to be nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He said aye.
All right. Yeah, we clap?
I wanna see all you guys. Every meeting. We got.
Okay.
I'm very stubborn woman, I think you might, I think I might.
Have any other new business?
Uh, yes, I have a few things. So I'm just gonna give you the update on the P DIF and what we have in the accounts. Um, as of, uh, earlier this week, we had seventy one thousand five hundred ninety-three in interest earned so far. The interest rate has gone down, last year we were at about five point four, for, um, now at four. Yeah, no, we, we lost a point, so we'll, you know, anticipate making as much as you did last year. Um, with the taxes coming in this month, as soon as we collect. A good portion of it, we'll move all of that collection over, so that will increase, um.
What's in that?
What's in that account?
I have a B budget for the interest on that, do we budget lower than the five point five that we were at, just in case this happened?
Um, well, we didn't budget around D D, we have to go back to sort of.
Oh, that. We got. Or not, yeah.
Yeah.
For the revenue estimate that I give D R A, uh, I will give them a, so I'll give that to them in the fall, so I'll leave that number and then I'll have. Um, Steve look at what the rate is and how much more we'll have either in or out until December, and then that will be how we estimate that.
Oh, welcome back.
We're, we're on the. We're on the.
You could have made this meeting twenty minutes shorter if you were here twenty minutes ago.
We would have been gone here to stay.
You see Sunny's broken arm?
Yeah. Back right now.
It couldn't have been really bad, the not getting all the way. Okay, new business.
Just another reminder that the tax bills are due July first and the water and sewer bills are due July ninth. Um, so far, we are at about twenty percent collected on the taxes. Taken in, uh, a little over two million in the last since the first. Um, also in your packet is I received a request to have a community. Update on the Gale School, uh, so Lexington Community developers will be having a community update on the Gale School. Uh, redevelopment, it will be here in this room on Wednesday, June twenty fifth at five P M.
I didn't realize they were just showing the face of that school, so.
Can I ask a question? Are they redoing the schools, is it, is it a restructuring of the school, what is, what is it exactly?
Recapping, yeah.
Recapping, okay, I'm sorry.
I understand that they're taking down the tower and everything, it's like it shows the bottom.
They're taking down the historic Gale School though?
Well, no, no. The, see the picture at the bottom, have they revending to the right side, I didn't see.
No, it isn't a historic, is it, uh, it's a circle building, how can they, how can they?
Cause you only have to keep certain aspects, like what happened at the La Pony and Lakeport Fire Department, where they turned it into a arena, but they got the face of the building inside the building.
Oh, is that, oh, I think that's what they're doing here.
They're, they're keeping the face still, the, the whole thing, taking down the tower.
But this is the backside.
Oh, that's the backside, oh, look at, and look at the front just with a mask on it.
That's the back, that's the front.
Maybe next if they hide it for me. They got it in the front they're adding.
No, no, no.
Ah. Oh, yeah, right there. Nevermind.
Yeah, so that would be here.
Okay, that would be here when, oh, there it is, when, Wednesday, June twenty fifth, here at five o'clock, if anyone is interested. Okay.
Oh, yeah, the Pennsycrime comes on.
Oh, Alicia, are you gonna come to that? I, well, I have a picture that was donated from. Mister Makeley's Trust, the teacher, former teacher of the Gale School, and he, and he, it's. And he, his, his son gave it to me to give to them, I just hadn't no time to give to them.
All right, do bring it to my office. What would that motion do to come this way?
I don't know, it was given to me, and she's like, yeah, you're good, this is people renovating the Gale School, I guess, okay. I'll give it to them, whoever wants it, he just wanted it out of his custody.
Awesome, all right.
And then in your packet, I had given you an, uh, an update on Senate Bill two ninety seven, which was. Um, it was basically, uh, this law was governing risk pools in the Hampshire. Um, it did fail in the amended version, um, although it was supported. Uh, it did not also, it did fail, so it is status quo as is, so we are not at risk, um, with losing our health trust. Or having to do any of the changes that were brought forward, so. For at least this year.
They're not even asking for a media conference, they can try and work on it, they just disagreed on it.
Yeah.
So these are good.
We're paying for another, no, we're paying for another year, until next session.
We also got an email from N H M A about our meals and rooms tax. Um, I'm just gonna read from the email here, uh, the House budget proposal suspended the thirty percent municipal share of the meals and rooms tax. In four year twenty six, twenty seven, and replaces it with a flat appropriation of a hundred and thirty seven million per year, which is distributed to non. The cities and towns in the Hampshire. Which is more than ten million less than over the two years than what was projected if the thirty percent share remained in effect. The Senate budget plan leaves this, leaves the dispersment as is. Uh, they are asking municipal officials to immediately contact members of the Committee of Conference on House Bill one slash House Bill two. As well as their local senator and reps, and tell them the House position downshifts costs to cities and towns. Plain and simple, and to leave the thirty percent share alone. As you know, municipalities have based along history of receiving less than the statutory forty percent share of the meals and rooms tax. It was only in twenty one that local governments regained, began receiving thirty percent share. Following more than a decade of reducing funding, the state aid is a crucial, crucial resource for all of our two hundred and thirty four members supporting. Essential services and infrastructure. Remind lawmakers of the importance of maintaining a fair and equitable share of all of this for all municipalities and the positive impacts. That thirty percent distribution has had on local government's sense of implementation. And also point out that towns have already adopted their operating budgets. And changes to state aid distribution at this point would only result in property tax increases and or reduce services for their constituents. In addition, let them know that changing this distribution formula truly calls into question whether the state will honor the ten year commitment made in this budget. To fund significant cost of pension benefit increases for a small portion of active first responders.
If you want to, you can try it, but because they both agree on it, it's not gonna change. That's like, that's gonna make you, it's, if you want, if it doesn't, if it's not too much of your time to send the letter, you can do it, but it's not gonna make a change. They both agree on it, they're fighting over way bigger things than that, than the budget, you know?
So maybe we can send a letter of, uh, support or, you know, tell them.
Where's that forty percent?
Yeah.
Well, that is, the issues of state hasn't so so involved, y'all and I, that's it.
And then, um. My last thing for, uh, new business or old business now is, um, where we are at the default. So we are in June, so we should be at fifty percent spent and we are at forty percent spent, so we are still trending under. We don't have a lot of bills that come in in the beginning of the year, so as it's going and the ends and.
Um, it sounds great right now, it's like right now.
They're reagging on that, that we cut out projects that we should be doing. We cut out buying, I think we should be buying, it's gonna, we're kicking a can down the road, it's gonna hurt us more and more each year that we're stuck in default.
Yeah.
I know it sounds great that we can make it under default, that's because we are doing products, we're not doing products that we should be doing.
For that, and we also have a lot of unfilled positions.
Yeah, that, if, which with the new budget, I've all loved the house.
I do have another thing.
Yes.
Uh, a couple weeks ago, I got an email, um. It's a grant opportunity, it's a cops grant opportunity, uh, for accreditation, accreditation is something that we've been looking into doing. Um, part of the grant, um. It will cover, um. For example, evidence, storage, locations, we really don't have any issue with that, uh, building security. I think we do need a couple more cameras within the buildings, um. Information and technology equipment, things like that, so, um, I asked that the. For us to be able to seek that grant to see if there's anything there viable for us to be able to, to get.
I don't think we've ever had an issue with trying to seek grants.
What's, sorry, what's the matter, fire cops grant?
I haven't looked into that yet, to be honest with you.
Right.
Um, but it just, it just came through and, um. Benny is willing to work on that, because it's due like next week, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to get it in in time, but they just can't provide us, so.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, remember your budget. Grants are great for us right now, so.
We need.
Trying to do projects that we have no money for, so it's something that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's a, you're not gonna get any objection from here, do we need a motion?
Just a census. You fine?
Yeah, I think you fine.
Thank you for bringing it up, okay.
Yeah. I don't think grants has ever been an issue here, that's for sure, um. So our next meeting is July second at ten A M. Right, and I believe we have a request for non public.
We do, but I don't know if you wanna ask if there's any public comments?
Oh, is there any public comment?
Only for the little cow, those squirrels and bears.
I'd say I buy a game camera left on my head of stolen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised it didn't need stolen, because it's been what, thirty one? Thirty one humans, thirty one humans on that camera, I'm surprised that one didn't get.
Again, they changed their picture.
Okay.
They checked that for Moby.
Uh, they probably say, yeah. Yeah, it had, it had signs being stolen, I was running to stay wrapped, but the game camera, the game camera, so I'm like.
Oh, oh, all right.
We do have a request to go into non public.
All right.
Correct, quantity, whatever, goes non public, RSA ninety one, uh, whatever.
Oh, no, it's C.
C, there you go.
Oh, is it C?
Yes, nine one eight three.
Yeah, man.
I don't have the keys.
All in favor? Thank you.
I was hoping it gets stolen, but.